Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. Just a reminder to the audience, whether you are presenting or just commenting on an agenda item, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the mayor stating your name and address. Non-agenda items can be presented under citizens not on the agenda, but are not debated debatable during the meeting. And please show courtesy and respect at all time. Thank you. Roll call please council. Mary Lynn Ray.
Nicole Danlasian.
My free lay is absent. Thank you. We'll move on to item number four. Approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the council on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve of the consent agenda please.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to the report tonight. Some of the sheriff's.
As Ben Hounds, Sheriff's Office, we had seventy-eight hours contract. We met those hours. If there's any questions or comments, you don't have to ask them on.
Council have any questions for the deputy? You want to mention those say it's? Um, just a heads up, at the end of the month, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth is our annual USA Day celebration.
We're contracted for the Friday night. There'll be a year of broadcast over there. But I will pass on the other.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the reports that are available in your packet council? Or any department heads?
Chris, you talked last time about Traverro and something they put up outside where they're loading box cigars outside. Uh, not box cars, uh, with tanker garden. Having with Traverro. He will look at making adjustments to the light industry up for that next week and they got that there. But I think there'll be two representatives to bear hopefully there. The in life. Or is the new guy just not aware of? They. That's not how it came out. That was their plan to begin with, but I had talked to Cynthia under my meeting, Traverro was never mentioned here. With our. Yeah. Yeah, that was part of Traverro's original business plan. They told me, although it was never, everybody to us. Is it just?
So Chris, are you saying was Carter there? Their plan to be loading outside?
That's what they told me at the meeting. I spoke with Cynthia afterward. She was involved in most of those meetings of burning.
I don't remember them ever mentioning that as their plans. There was no approval of any outside activity.
I thought we stipulated it all had to be inside for some reason that that's what it says.
That's what our process is.
Especially. I think you're thinking of Regen. That was one that really came up over and over again. Was Regen? But Traverro never made us aware of the fact that they'd be loading it up outside.
So common planning and zoning.
Yeah, planning and zoning. Look at it actually. To do everything to contain the systems, the load, uh, there'll be two representatives. Traverro will.
What are they loading and unloading?
I was like flash. They're adding concrete. It's all within the same system. So they have backups. So there. The other thing that I'm loading a lot is lumber. They're not putting that in the warehouse. They built a big uh, fenced in area, privacy vents up there. That's where they've been the.
Any questions for Chris Wallace, that's the podium? Thanks, Chris. Any other questions for any other department heads, please? Okay. We'll move on to item number six, an update from the library board. I think you so you're the speaker for this. Okay, thank you.
I'm Paul from the library board. Thanks for allowing and for a very brief message today. I'm just sharing comments, uh, and feedback that came from our last library board meeting. I'm sure I'm going to read this. This essentially reflects some comments that went around. So, uh, library board appreciates the previous firm from the Fairfax City Council and support of the library expansion. Library reported approved the purchase of the corner parking lot south of the current library for a hundred and fifty K or from the Fairfax Savings Bank with some concerns that I'll explain here. There were concerns about the timing of the lot purchase. Um, as it is early in the expansion process for library. Um, fundraising process has really not started and at this point the city has made a limited financial you know, more, maybe a more definite uh, commitment of funds will come from the city and will be critical to our process to obtain grants. The approved action to purchase the park at the top of the board uh, for under fifty thousand dollars was really to show to the front commitment that that the board has to forward with the library expansion. Um, we believe in the future of the Fairfax library expansion and we want to partner in every way possible with council support for the library's future. To expand the ability to serve the growing community in Fairfax. So we just haven't decided partner. That's, that's something we want to do which as we continue to cooperate and it's all about partnering and keeping support together. While we realize that no commitment, final commitment can be made until the fiscal year budgets are approved. We would like you to consider modifying the capital improvement plan to commit six hundred thousand uh, for fiscal twenty twenty-seven and three hundred thousand for fiscal twenty twenty-eight. We're not looking for any decision on that tonight, but we believe this will be very beneficial to our ability to take grants. That's all they had to share. Thank you. Uh, any questions for?
Have you looked at specific grants? Like, are they a match? Like, we would have to match five hundred thousand and you would get?
Yes.
Specifically?
Uh, Albright One who has looked at. Albright Foundation. I don't know that Vic. No, it's essentially it's the, it's the foundation. That is what you're getting the grants and then giving that money to get into the state.
Just a quick note to the council, the status of the purchase agreement, the library board, as Bruce uh, mentioned, has approved it and it, um, went back to the Fairfax State Savings Bank because it is a new agreement from what they saw previously. And, um, we're waiting for their, their board to approve uh, the amended agreement before council could take any action. So that's the correct steps.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item number seven, discussion on possible motion considering the fire department savings that come in budget. The chief was going to speak to that. I don't see the chief.
Um, so, uh, fire chief asked for this to be on the agenda. Uh, once everything is posted in June, he would like the council to look and see if they have uh, budget authority left. And if possible, they would like that amount transferred into their savings account to save towards major purchases. Um, if you remember, part of their budget amount is set on the amount that the townships contribute and the city of Walford contributes. And we have gotten their funding at the level plan. So, you know, if the money left over, most of the city, uh, departments, if it just gets absorbed in the, uh, general fund, it's ninety percent city money that's just doing that. But Walford actually, uh, uh, supports at a dollar forty-three thousand and us just at a dollar right now, but we do some loss money. He's just talking about the general fund money. And I don't know what that number is yet till we present anything to the city here. So if you want more information, it could be on your July agenda.
Well, don't pay all the other things. So do you pay the ones that use it with the gear come up for replacement of gear?
In case they don't get the grant.
The council like that. More detail to be available on a July agenda rather than just make decisions tonight. Please thank you. Okay. We will move back. Let's call that July. And we'll move on to item number eight, consider resolution awarding general obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty-five. And we have Maggie with us tonight to.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger. With Spirit Financial. We did, uh, receive bids this morning for the sale of three million, ten thousand dollars of general obligation corporate purpose funds series twenty twenty-five. We are recommending this evening that we would award to Robert W. Baird and Company out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They were the lowest bidder by interest, by true interest cost. Um, and so their interest rate is a three point nine five zero two percent. BOK Financial is in a second place at a four point zero three two one and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis for the four point three three, uh, four point zero three three eight. Um, we are noting that there was a small premium paid. In the past, you might have recalled that sometimes, uh, they will want an interest rate, but interest rates are a little bit lower than that rate. Maybe trading in the market, so they will give you a premium. There's eleven thousand dollars of premium in today's issue. Uh, in the past, we've seen, uh, premiums as high as you know, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, but the market that we're in today are four percent interest rates. So the underwriter bid, uh, four percent interest rate all the way down. And then with that eleven thousand dollars of premium, it buys you down to that three point nine five percent interest rate. As part of our bond issue, we did get a credit rating for the city. Um, I will say hats off to Cynthia. She spent an hour, um, on the phone with Moody's, talking about the city, giving all the ins and outs, talking about demographics, talking about financials. She did an excellent job. Um, you did come back and the rating that you were given was an A two. That's a pretty standard rating, I would say, for a community your size in the state of Iowa. They do rate you on what we call a global scale, meaning they're rating you across other entities all over the nation. Uh, entities that can be bigger than you, smaller than you, but they're putting you in comparison with financials, uh, demographics and things like that. Uh, one thing that they talked about was that you have a very good growth happening. Your resident income is a solid number. Uh, they talk about the city having good, um, uh, good liquidity and good operating surplus. And so just so you know, uh, Moody's, any other rating agency, they want to know that you have cash. They want to know that there's going to be cash there available. If push comes to shove and let's just say property taxes were delayed three or four months, let's just say something happens that county doesn't get the property tax statements out in time, giving folks more time to pay. They want to make sure that from July first, um, you know, in the beginning of the fiscal year, there's money in the bank to keep the lines on, to keep making payroll, to keep operating the government as it typically, um, is operated. They also then talk, you know, what factors could lead to a downgrade, a draw on fund balance. And so again, they, they, they focus heavily on fund balance. Um, again, you're, you're scorecarding out at the A two rating. Uh, and that is the assigned rating. So there's an analyst who talks to us on the phone for an hour with Cynthia. Um, that analyst goes back and it goes to a committee. All that information permitted to, uh, is provided to a committee and then a committee makes that decision. So we're very happy with that. We know that, uh, BOK Financial, um, even though they were in second place, they would not have bid today if there was not a rating. Um, they are a firm that needs to have a rating. Uh, Robert W. Baird ended with the rating. Um, and they would have probably bid it without, but their interest rates likely would have been um, above four percent without that, uh, rating, which is what we've been seeing in the market out of them recently. There's not a rating available. Uh, part of Robert Baird's syndicate, this is on the second to the last page of our packet, but part of their syndicate today included people like Bernardi Securities, U N P Bank. Um, it had Country Club Bank and United Bankers Bank in it. Those are firms that have typically bid on your deals when you're at six hundred thousand, a million dollars. There are firms that are likely not big enough to bid on three million dollars by themselves. So they pair up with an underwriter, um, who is able, and in this situation, they got it with Robert Baird to be able to to take some of this deal, uh, when it is traded in the market. Also, the underwriter today, Robert Baird, did purchase insurance. So the insurance was not at your cost. This was insurance. Um, and what that does is the insurance from Build American Mutual today. Um, and because they put insurance on there and they paid the fifteen thousand dollar, um, premium and then that was paid by Robert Baird at no expense to the city. BAM or Build American Mutual, they have a rating of a double A stable rating, which is a whole category above where you're rated in the A two. There's a triple A category, a double A category, then a single A category in our investment grade. Uh, because Build American Mutual has investment grade, um, and they are a double A rated. This just means that Robert Baird will be able to turn around and sell these bonds um, in the secondary market to not only investments and investors who want single A, but also double A, and that makes them more lucrative. That helps get you a better interest rate because they've got that capability of doing that. Um, so that's something that we've been seeing a lot of recently as well. Uh, the final debt service schedule is attached and the bonds are callable after June first of twenty thirty-three. Um, that just means at that time, if interest rates were the same, you'll just continue to pay. As is if interest rates are lower at that time or any time after that, you could potentially refinance them. Um, we always are going to run that to make sure that there's good enough savings to do that. And I'll remind you, we all be refunding us out to the original maturity dates that you don't go out any longer because that speaks to purpose of, of the interest savings. Um, and then also at that time, or any time after, you would be able to redeem these bonds. I mean, you could pay them off in parts, you could pay them off in whole, um, whatever you wanted to do at that point in time. So with that, I'd answer any questions that you have.
One question, the rates have gone up. What were they the last few years?
Yeah. Well, they were two and three percent, um, in twenty twenty. They had, they had started to inch back up before the pandemic. We were seeing three and a half, four percent interest rates. After the pandemic, they were in that, you know, two percent range again. I did look back last year, Northland Security was the winning bidder on your deal. You had two bids last year. It was only six hundred and sixty thousand. We did not have a rating, but last year's interest rates at the same time were four point four nine percent. They were a four percent down, going four point five percent. Um, that's what we've been seeing when we've done these look backs on everybody who sold last year. So although we've seen interest rates rise over the last few weeks, um, they really settled down. We saw them rise. Honestly, with, with talks of tariffs, uh, that was when we saw a big jump in the bond market. That has really eased and come pretty much back down, but as you can see, we're much lower than we were last year. Um, so we're happy to see that. We're just going to keep our fingers, you know, intertwined, hoping that the Federal Reserve will continue to move interest rates downward over the next, um, six, twelve, eighteen months. And that could also, uh, impact future bond issues for, uh, the city in a, in a positive way.
Any other questions for me? Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Move on to item number eight. Consider resolution awarding the general obligation corporate bonds. That was item number eight, but I need a motion, please. So.
Second.
Roll call please, stuff.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number nine, which is a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a water revenue law and disbursement agreement. Going to open the public hearing. Cynthia, did we receive any comments in advance?
Not at city.
Okay. Do you want to give us a brief description on this, please?
Uh, this is, uh, the uh, funds needed to do the well number four construction. Remember, we're using our ARPA funds, Lynn County's grant, and then, uh, uh, we already have a planning and development zero percent, uh, loan for this, and then this is additional to finish the construction.
Council have any questions for Cynthia on this? Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number ten to consider the resolution to enter into this water revenue and law disbursement agreement. Need a second, please?
Second.
Roll call please, Mary.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Moving on, item number eleven, discussion concerning Layton, Iowa Land Building Laydown Area. helpful for your information. Uh, you find in your package a development agreement that has been signed by both Iowa Land and Layton Construction. And, uh, got my group set the podium with a couple of hats before we discuss.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us again, once, once again here. Uh, before we get started, I'd like to tell you thank you, uh, for all the efforts that have been put forward this week. There's been a flurry of activity. I appreciate your, your diligence and work specifically in this development agreement and would like to, uh, uh, also, uh, begin with interruptions as well. That said, I would like to introduce Senator Charlie McLeto.
Uh, thank you. I'll be very quick. I just want to say thank you to the Honorable Mayor, Council, and to the staff. Uh, I've been both a council member and a bear. I know the dedication and, you know, time you put into your jobs. I truly appreciate it. I appreciate being here. Both I want to say thank you for, uh, your willingness to cooperate and to, uh, uh, have these partnerships that, that, that everybody within towns, state, uh, gets, uh, recognized and appreciated. So thank you so much. Uh, and I also want to say thank you to the city itself for, uh, knowing each representative in the city. So thank you again for everything.
Senator.
Would have said it better. Uh, that said, I'd also like to introduce, uh, the, the rest of our team members as well. Would like to start with the Lions, if you could.
Emily Kaiser, Alliance Energy.
Dustin Kern.
Warren.
Yeah.
Um, we also have, and I'm not sure if they can join in, but we also have several members, sorry.
We must prove. I'll play the chart. I can't even look.
My writer a little long. So, uh, that said, we also have other members, owners that are listening in from, from our, uh, they are partners that are not sure if they have the, the, the ability to speak as, as needed, but.
You able to hear me?
Yeah.
Anyone able to hear me? Hi, sorry, everyone. This is Jeff Green. I'm sorry for not being able to join you in person, but I represent TGS. And, uh, want to thank, uh, city council, the mayor, everyone for their hardworking staff, I should say staff as well, um, for all their hard work and helping us get to a group that care, uh, at the company. Um, and again, apologies for not being able to make it in person, uh, looking forward to our partnership with, uh, the city for that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I am still, I am also. That's it.
Well, do you have any final questions regarding the agreement? That anyone from any of the representatives could address? The next step is if you are in favor of moving forward with this agreement, please demonstrate this through a resolution and item number twelve. But I'll pause, see if you have any questions. Give me a sign, please, council.
It's changed up this last couple of days, right?
The only thing that changed, um, was late Friday, the, the individual named as a signatory for Iowa Land was changed in order to include a local representative. And he is here, see. Or Lake, I'm sorry. From Lake, not Iowa Land, Lake side. Is that Darren yet? No.
That's me. Darren was, but he's not, like, I will be. I'll be the one who is follow through on those commitments, so.
And you're a local person, right?
I live here. But Darren is from, you know, he kind of be this pretty fast thought about being a local boy.
So that was the only the change within the last couple of days. Well, after I had distributed on Friday, yeah. Any other comments? And I do also appreciate everyone that had on some of the city and on the council that has reviewed this. There's been multiple iterations, a lot of feedback obtained. Everybody's put a lot of effort in this. And now's the time to indicate your desire or lack of desire to move forward. So we'll move on to item number twelve. Considering a resolution to enter into this development agreement, do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call please. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number thirteen, discuss.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I just want to say thank you. I know this has been a challenging decision that Fairfax has wondered. Let's say it for us because development is a favorite there. We recognize there the considerations that you've given, given us, to plan to be a very uh, dedicated partner, fulfilling all of our obligations to the city and to our partners. So thank you very much. Just to thank that, keep a lot of people safe and keep this production, uh, and this project on track. So thank you. Thank you so much.
We do have one more item on the agenda discussed regarding this project, item number thirteen. Discussion on possible motion, uh, concerning the laydown site plan. You have, uh, Shane had provided several things within your packet. Shane, could you give us an update on things and if you could go up the podium, please?
There's really not much change from the original smittle. And they provided lighting and a lapse of question. Probably there's, I've seen not too much out there of deals, but they, they got these portable lights. The distribution area when they're oh, the operational full height was less than two hundred feet. I think that's where you had kind of showed where the lighting. The area of impact. Other than that, they, for me, I think, I think the uh, most recent smell also had a restoration plan added to it. Turn it back to restoration condition.
They talked about hurricane hours as far as rainfall hours, that's, that all, what you see in there is, is all good as far as being close to.
The plans don't need, any of your working hours here, last, last week they talked about. Sure to, ready. Those things, that's on the sun set. So the city's plan.
Okay.
Is there anything outstanding that you've asked for Shane? Were there any concerns? I see that they did, they were not required to get a DNR permit? Is that correct?
No, yeah, based on stream. The stream, the drainage area of the stream, that's a city ordinance, so that's council provision that first would issue the permit. See something, that's what. It's interesting.
Chris, did you have any concerns or, or questions on this?
Oh.
Um, so it sounds like there's that permit moving forward, any other permits that are required? Chris, uh, that council should be aware. Any questions for Shane or Chris on this?
So someone will be required to do a sweep every week and all that stuff will be handled, but?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is someone going to do a weekly slip or something with them then on the site?
Yes, certain more acres, so they have this, and yes.
Is that through us or through the DNR or someone else or?
Well, they have to provide that themselves. I mean, they have to, yeah. And any construction, say the contract administrator provides a SWIP, the updated SWIP. So you're saying who inspects that?
Yeah, who's going to see that? Who's going to be in charge of that?
The city wants to send somebody out there to look at it, and the DNR is only going to look at it if they get a claim for certain. So for the city, they won't send somebody out there to look in.
They know you might don't do a third party. Yeah, I was just going to say, pardon me.
Okay.
So we do a third party sort of inspection every week, so that you submit it, check it off, and then we'll have that documentation for review. Anyone that comes to the site.
Thank you.
Definitely. And that has to be posted on site too, right?
Any other questions for Shane or Chris? Okay, hearing that, consider a motion to approve the site plan.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, please?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your input, that is.
Next, we'll move on to item number 14, 6811 Williams Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Extension. In your packet, you've got information from both Shane and Chris has provided a recommendation as well. Well Shane, are you going to talk that first here?
Yeah, so uh, council directors, go ahead and uh, put together plan improvements uh, to extend Sanitary Sewer 6811 Williams Boulevard. So this project is under the bid threshold, so we won't bring up the public bidding. So this is really more kind of just an FYI, your information, so get plans uh, we'll put it out for competitive quotes, we'll submit it out to four or five contractors that can do directional drilling. Try to minimize the impact of profit felt there. You can, well, less complex, certainly, we'll, uh, move forward, put those out for folks tomorrow. But to receive the quotes on Wednesday, July 2nd, we have no time for council's consideration at the July 20th. The engineer's estimate of probable cost is $83,000 for the construction of the project. We are looking at early start date of July 28th, late start date of August 25th, with the completion of October 17th. You have limited damages of $500 per day, and we have incentives, disincentives. There as well, if I get that done. That would allow, you know, time standby October 17th for property owners to connect their sewer surface into the sewer main. It was last portion of October, first part of November. So any questions on the project?
How much would it cost? To go from our house, okay?
I don't know that for sure. That could be 3,000, 6,000, in that range. That's just a, you know, off the top of my head, you have to try to, you try to contact the, from the work if that's something they're be interested in doing. Um, and it can wait, maybe you can't act, they can do something like that. Chris, you have the under, uh, papers that can be done in sewer service.
Me. Another one that does it.
Um, me.
M-I-E-N-E, me, you said, side big searchers.
I don't understand.
Eric, that's another one that could bid that way.
Oh.
Yeah, neither. You hear a question that you ask.
Yeah. So basically, we still won't know if we can have um, a septic or if we have to hook up to the city.
Well, that's what we're here to decide tonight. Council will decide that tonight.
So that's the first item. Um, item 14A, discussion of possible motions concerning this extension and competitive quotes. Separately, we'll talk about potential connection fees. Thirdly, we'll talk about easement. And fourth, we'll talk about potential tree removals and some other things. So now is the time, council, to um, discuss if you want to move forward with this project.
I do have a quick question, Shane. Um, they're down on the east end, and we were talking about the amount of frontage to get from the rest of those properties eventually if we were going to do that. So is that something where the other ones are kind of close together, then you get to the pasture area, which isn't anything right now, then Vance's house, I believe. But is it such that if they don't develop that little lot in the section and Vance would want to hook up, that you would come from the other side where it's closer to connect? Or do you have to, do you have to connect it all?
Put in a little station, roughly, or you'd have to cut through the buildable area of the lot. Um, you could possibly get that second line. Right now, there's a manhole up top of the old carwell issue.
Do you mean, so if she wanted to hook up, we would come this direction and not try to run it all the way up the hill? Or?
Say she, you mean Vance?
Yeah, if she wanted to hook up, would you have to connect it all the way?
It's possible that, it's fine, I haven't looked into it, so I couldn't say for sure. But it's possible that, that where Vance's house sits right now, that they could, they could connect to the sewer that's at the top of the hill. But that's like two acre plus lot, and a lot of it falls to the northeast. So if that were to develop in the future, that may not be, you know, so the existing condition, it's very, it's very possible. But again, I haven't looked at it, but you mentioned that. But, you know, if that were to develop, you know, new house or split the lot, add a second house, or be developed through all that family or commercial, that could very well change. If you look at, you see pretty much, you know, there's the, there's the intersection, right, with the highway. And get the street, it's written for you to drive or.
Highway.
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 The house is right there at that intersection, and that, the way that lot, once you get past the house, starts to slope to the east and falls away quite a bit.
Yeah. So council, do you want to move forward with the project and have Shane get some bids?
I guess Keith and Bonnie, I, I just want to mention to you guys that we have an ordinance in place for all Fairfax, that if someone is on septic sewer, and when it goes to fail, it's required, as the ordinance is written today, that you hook up to Fairfax. So it's unfortunate that you're here today, but there are many other residents in town that will eventually, this happen to as well. And, and what's tough, in my opinion, for Fairfax is if we said it's okay, signed off on you to do septic, well then everybody would sign off to do septic and not, not hook up to sewer. So we have all this infrastructure that we have in place, makes it tough to pick and choose who uses it and who doesn't. Is, is kind of the, the overall reason why we're here today. I, I definitely sympathize with the position that you're in. I, I do. But everyone is in a similar position. There's just has not failed as of yet.
So basically, what you're saying is we will not be able to get a, a septic system.
Well, that's what we're about to, right now, to, to decide on, right now. Be, yes or no, we would have to go against the ordinance that we currently have in place.
Well, what the council is deciding in this motion is whether to move forward with that extension or not. So, Barb, would you like to say?
Senator 101 Williams Boulevard Fairfax, uh, the last meeting I spoke with, or the meeting before that, with Bernie, the former mayor of Bernie Reagan. We discussed this at my dining room table about our septic system, and he said that we may install the drive, eventually have city sewer come through. And should that happen, I would be given the choice at that time to hook up or not. However, should, for no cost to me, when that comes through, however, should my septic system fail, and I choose not to hook up when it comes through, then I would have to pay. Has that changed? Because what I'm hearing here, you're going to be charging these people. Are you, are you already out there? Is Fairfax already out there in front of their home? Are you asking them to hook up?
So what has happened in the past, Barb, like over on, on East Cemetery, was we eventually ran sewer in front of those houses, and they all had septic because they were pre our sewer. With the, the understanding that when there's system failed, they had to hook up.
And they would have to pay to hook up at that time?
Yeah, they would have to pay. And so it's, it's like trade office, so they, they would pay to get the septic reinstalled, or they would pay us to have the sewer installed. We're here to decide which direction we want to go, and then if we have them hook up, what that fee will be.
Were they given the opportunity when you came in front of their property?
We have not come in front of their property, that's.
No, not these people, but that, the one that you're speaking about, when you came through, did you give those folks the opportunity to hook up at that time? And give them the same understanding that if their septic failed, that they could not?
I believe they were asked if they wanted to hook up at that time, they could. They either, they didn't have to, but when their systems failed, they would have to.
At their cost.
Yeah, they would have to pay the cost.
But had they hooked up when you came through?
I don't know if we had anybody that did or we did not. We'd have to go back and look.
Okay, that.
I thought we did have a couple of people, just because that area is so low lying. We had a couple of yards that they couldn't get their perk test. They always had issues with their septic. So I think we did have a couple of houses, but I mean, it's been so long ago now, we.
But not free, because.
No, but it wasn't free, they have to. It's you either pay for your septic or you pay to hook up.
Well, that's not the way Bernie said it at that time, of course, he's not the mayor now. But I will say this, that, you know, I have my own septic, and the city has been a profit from these people once they hook up. So it would be minimal for the city, but it could be a huge burden on like people like me and these folks to hook up. Several thousand dollars might not mean a, a lot to, you know, the city of Fairfax, who has seems like a lot of money, but we don't.
Well, we haven't got to that point yet, but if you're looking at what he's talking about, the cost to run the sewer to their property is over $83,000. We're not going to charge them $83,000 to hook up. There'll be a set fee based on a couple of different formulas, but usually it's based on your frontage, correct Shane? And then we, we figure out how much to charge them. So, and usually that fee would be relative to what the septic cost would be.
Well then, perhaps you should give them the opportunity to keep their septic or to have their septic hook back in place. Because, you know, we're looking at thousands of dollars for each person to hook up. And if you're going to have it out there, the city is going to profit from this down the road. And it's not fair to, in my opinion, to uh, ask them to pay this uh, when you're, when the city is going to profit from this.
Okay, Barb.
In the long.
Your septic has, has failed and you, and, and if I remember, how much was it to replace it? What was your estimate, 15,000?
15,000.
15,000.
16,000, yeah.
To replace?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's not a small amount, regardless, you have a large amount that.
Maybe two years of what they, what the city, you know, I'm not, I don't, I don't know what the city charges gratefully, but I'm guessing a couple, three years, they could have that paid off, paying the city that same.
Shane, what is an approximate, or what's an approximate average?
A bill.
Sewer.
Sewer bill.
Not water, just sewer.
That'd be a question for Shane.
Shane doesn't know.
Yeah.
But I think aside of that, open and define.
It's all.
Place the city in profit for.
Well, I'm not, not use profit to use, what would their bill be just per sewer for, for one month?
And, and remember, once they're on the city sewer, they're not going to have to pay for another septic system.
Correct.
At however long.
In 25 years.
Um, so I think the minimum, I don't have in front of me, I think the minimum is $14.
$14.
Yeah.
So $150, $200 a year. For, so a few years, let's say 10 years. I mean, my, my septic is 20 years old. It is, it is doing very well, and I'm not paying Fairfax. And have never in the last 50 years. So, I mean, these people for 15 grand, I would gladly pay 15 grand rather than pay the people. That's just my opinion. But, you know, if you're going to come in front of their property and offer it to them, and you're going to profit from them, then I don't see why you should charge them to hook up.
Barb, thanks for your comments. We do have a seven minute limit. Thank you. All right, council. Do you have any other questions or feedback before you make a decision on item 14A?
The real question is, do we ignore or go against our ordinance or follow ordinance, right?
I can't hear you.
So the real question is, do we ignore or not follow our ordinance, is, or do we follow our ordinance?
Could, could you please read your ordinance again?
Or sewer hookup?
What, what you're out right for him to?
I don't think we have the ordinance in our packet this evening, doing.
Then maybe you should not vote on it.
We know the ordinance is.
We don't.
Yeah, but Barb, yeah, like she said, most, most people don't know what that ordinance says. If, if you had put it in there about the ordinance, then they, then you should have had a copy to, to the public at that time.
It's on our website, yes, available probably 24/7.
Counsel. Guidance, please.
We can bring it back next month if you want to find the ordinance. Just one, one question, just, just to clarify something you said. And maybe I misunderstood, but you said if, if a resident has the choice between septic and sewer, they would choose septic. Oh, no, 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 okay.
If your sewer fails, and there's sewer right now, and it, it fails, the ordinance says they have to hook up.
No, if you were, it's, I'm saying, when you were speaking earlier, I'm.
Okay, so I said, I said the choice, there's, there are.
We can't turn on.
We can't dare.
There's not, our ordinance is, there's not a choice. If I said the word choice, I'm sorry, that was. That's constant, this age. If there's sewer on adjacent property, they can get to.
On adjacent property in front of.
Yeah.
So if you lost septic on the middle of nowhere, we're not going to.
Exactly.
Yeah, but since they're right next to sewers.
And it's right in front of her home.
It's right next to the lot.
Right, I mean, was in easy hookup.
150 feet of property, like.
Now it is 150?
So the, at the last meeting.
So the at the last meeting, the discussion was there's uh there's four houses in this. What a kind of county parcel that came into the city that weren't part of that new development. So all the utilities and improvements got made all the way around them, they all had. Their own water and well and septic.
Which another gentleman was here and he said he didn't want to study either.
Right, so and that's that's the the thing with that, you know, do you? Do we hook it up or do we not hook it up? Because it's a lot, it's an odd situation, we aren't gonna have that situation in town, believe. Anywhere else. Uh, ask the property owners, remind us as. Uh, your septic hasn't failed, we're after you are just.
In the house.
You know.
That's why we're here.
That's why.
County Health is asking us to get this done so it's possible.
Okay.
And they have to.
Reminding the council.
But I have to remind county health that we have a process, they must to do this.
Right, so so counsel, the decision remains, do you want to vote on this tonight, do you want to postpone July and and um. Include the ordinance itself.
If you vote on it, you're probably not getting done until November, until December.
And these people want to keep their septic and replace it. Just for the record.
Wasn't also their septic too close to their hand well or something too, would that be all? They both in the prime.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Well, the deal with the well is the county permitted the well and they never should have because we have a water wire up front, we knew nothing about it until Brian saw the well drilling. Machine up there on a Saturday, I believe it was, and that's when we found out about it, okay.
How long have you lived there?
Barb, Barb, your time is up, thank you.
Well, we're asking these people this. In my opinion.
Counsel. What do you want to do? I was the noble last time, if you recall, so I'm just saying. So does anybody want to make their motion?
All motion. Or and I will explain in a short sentence the reason why, we have an ordinance. And in my opinion. We can't vary from an ordinance that fit every certain situation. If we do, don't have ordinances, it's as simple as that, it's as simple as that.
I need a second.
Please.
One more comment, please identify yourself.
If I'm hearing things correctly.
So Cindy, please.
Oh, sorry, Cindy Anderson, Fairfax, uh, then, right. If I'm hearing things correctly, there is no sewer stuff there at the moment, correct?
Next door.
Correct. There's but next but. Nothing that would, it sounds like you would have to run another line to get to their property, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. As far as I understand the ordinance, it only applies if it's there. It's not there yet, you haven't built it to their property, so. That ordinance wouldn't apply, it would apply if you moved in and it's there and now you're, it fails, yeah, you have to hook up. But it's not there yet. If I'm understanding incorrectly.
Rob, can you reclassify what you said?
It states that you are required to hook up to the sewer. If the sewer is within a hundred and fifty feet of your property line. The city will make it available to you to do that, but the city has to extend it to be able to do that. If that makes sense.
And whose cost?
The city's cost.
Okay, so then they wouldn't be charged to hook up.
Well, they will be, but I mean, we pay the full cost, we charge them a hookup connection fee.
Which would be.
We have chairman.
Have they decided that, yeah.
And then the the property owner, if situations different, property owner could extend itself and they should choose to. Maybe the city doesn't have to property or want to extend to the public for themselves. Which is ultimately, not ultimately, but a lot of times the situation if it's developed. That's still property owner, but this obviously the situation is so resonant, it's not at all.
And they don't want it.
We have a motion on the floor to move forward, do we have a second?
Uh, second.
You are a second? Okay, so. I have a motion and a second, I need an all in favor here, please, or a no vote, whatever you're voting, please.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
So we have a tie vote. So it does not move forward. So Cynthia, would you explain? Um, what could potentially happen on this motion?
It was defeated.
It was defeated. But there's a rule regarding. Bringing it.
For reconsideration.
For reconsideration.
I I believe um two of the prevailing side, I'd have to look it up for sure, um and request for it to be. Uh reconsidered, um, one of the reasons might be that the full council isn't here, you know. I know uh one of the times that something was reconsidered, that was the driving force. Um, because the full council wasn't here and that determined the outcome of the motion, just by somebody being a gun.
Okay, so um this did not pass, so that takes care of. Item fourteen, all A, B, C, and D, so.
I I I just, I have one question, it's not for, but Barb Hunter, just one question for counsel and mayor. Can they go ahead with their septic, we don't. Says this is benched down.
That was my question, was since we, since it wasn't approved and we are not going to forward, so. And we don't know if someone's going to object or not object. What is the recourse, they can go ahead and do their septic? Or how does that, because we don't have a right to tell them not to, or?
We sure do.
You do, you.
I'm addressing.
But yes, I'm saying.
The city does, and the council did not just make a motion to allow a septic, you made a motion. Not to put it out for competitive quotes.
So. So whatever you.
So where does that leave us?
Well, my question.
In Limbo?
That's my question, we're getting there, give us a minute. Any guidance? From anyone? Chris, any thoughts?
So one option would be for me to ask to bring it up next time with, since we have a council member that's not present.
But you can ask, but you're not, weren't on the prevailing side.
Right.
That's the wording I have to check for sure.
Um.
Dan or Mary Ann.
You know, I'll I'll just give one input on how we worded the agenda tonight. It was based on your decision at last meeting to authorize the engineer. You entered into an engineering agreement to have this project engineer, so. Not moving forward with the project wasn't everything, anything we considered for this agenda. I mean, you've already entered an agreement for the project, but.
Keeping my stance. I didn't change my mind. So we need to give the property owners guidance here, counsel. So can we tell them to go ahead and get a septic system if one can or not? Or do they?
Not without a motion, I don't believe.
Or do they proceed at their own risk, like they took the well? And I'm just, so what do we need to, how do we handle this, how do we move forward?
Well, I would think it will have to be on your next agenda, whether to allow them to have a septic system. And then whether the prevailing side want to allow the reconsideration of the quotes.
Maybe.
With the full council.
Um, potentially, we do have a special meeting two weeks from tonight. Cause it might be different if Mike is here, I just know I I'm not changing my stance.
Is this something they could do to the board adjustment?
No, they only handle zoning issues.
I really meant like once a month, sir.
Sorry, the special council meeting two weeks from tonight was. We thought was gonna be short just on our bond. There would be an opportunity. To do either put a motion on there, whether the septic would be allowed, or. If one of the knows wanted to bring it back for reconsideration.
Good all the property owners attend that at that time, they had an argument and discussion about it.
Okay, that's always available.
So.
To any item that's on the agenda.
Can Mike ask for it to be put on the agenda since he does not here?
No.
No, we're trying.
Well, he can ask, but.
No.
It's not officially one of the ones that can make it happen, I mean, he can ask you as a prevailing voter. If you would, he can ask Dan, you know. The the two that voted yes can ask you.
To change it all.
No.
All right, to reconsider.
Yeah, to reconsider.
To have it on the agenda the next.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Yeah.
You want to make that decision tonight, whether to put it on the special meeting's agenda or what would you like to do, counsel? Cause my problem is in this, isn't so much this connection, it's the other connections. Where we have to put the live station in and spend a million dollars to rent sewer or houses. When they won't go anywhere else, either direction.
And let's keep in mind.
That's right.
All Fairfax is in, there's multiple property owners that are in the same situation. So we're setting precedents, that'll eventually go.
We can't hear you.
We're setting precedents. With what happens with each property owner, with everybody else in Fairfax, we're setting precedents.
Well, this is the only place where we have sewer, but that where would the other ones be?
With all of south and west cemetery, you're gonna have big riggers. Like Bob or Ronnie's in Cleveland there or here. Anything close on south, even what starts up west cemetery.
So we'd have to rent it on the way up.
Well, eventually, each time maybe somebody that has that property that's within a hundred and fifty feet is. You're gonna come back to this again.
Every property evades that has a septic system. Which there's lots of them out there.
Barb, I'm sorry, but it's frustrating to me, I just told one thing because it's gonna cost me and all my neighbors thousands of dollars. You understand that, thousands of dollars, what you're telling these people? We have a new septic or pretty new septic, it's gonna last my lifetime, so, but if y'all come in and something might happen and it would fail and I don't hook up to you, it's gonna be out of my pocket. I was assured by Bernie, the former mayor, that I could hook up. And and no cost, so why don't you offer that to these folks, if you're gonna extend this out, hook them up. Don't charge them thousands, I just, I don't get this.
Please sit down, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel. So what are we trying to decide, whether or not to put it on our special agenda, whether or not to allow them to have a septic system? That's one option. And or back to what were is on the agenda tonight? Is that? No, if you want to reconsider, either yourself or Dan would have to request that it be on the agenda for reconsideration.
And if you wanted to do that on your special, you could have both topics, you could have. To put out for competitive quotes and all the subtopics, or you could put. Uh another topic to allow them to have a septic or not.
Do that so we can move on with this meeting, so all these.
Is that a motion?
I move that, let's have those two options on the agenda for next one.
For June?
No, the special.
The next special.
To June twenty four, two weeks from tonight. Is there a second? Is there a second?
The, you're saying allow them to have a septic, so.
Or.
Or.
And all of these times, so you we can discuss. That way we can discuss, though, we can't discuss them if they're not on the agenda, so that way we can discuss everything and. Make a decision.
Second, the the specials on, I'm sorry.
Point four, two weeks from tonight. Have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Right, aye.
Thank you. All right. Move on to item number fifteen, consider resolution to approve the quotes, receive and take construction group for hard light part restment of them yet. Like John, we're gonna talk about that. For these threats, sir, said. Yes.
Yeah, you can, uh, this way you have complex. There's even such plans there.
There's half one over there.
I guess you guys will the short version or the one?
I want the good version, John.
Almost sort of the short. This was uh, this is for the rest rooms and decided to go there and base it on, it's their balance. Which had a uh, a second. Which based on our estimate, addition of operating that's ninety five, compared with automation.
Ninety, ninety five.
Point zero five.
Hang on a second, John, we're. Just a minute.
Finally, on the order. It's it's ninety five point five.
Okay, now go.
All right, so. Uh, this project started out. If you recall, um, it's gonna be R F B design building. We got, that kind of fell through, found out. Cities getting that insurance on building trips, so. Uh, therefore, we drew up a set of plans, they had the fund there. It was a uh, better quotation project, based on our estimate, so. We didn't go through the full public bidding process. Got the plans on, I think it was in February. Said for contractors to solicit quotes. And quotes are given at the end of March. All four contractors showed interest, opened the old baby Porsche quotes review. Into the new date and no quotes were submitted. Uh, so. Uh, based on state quotes, their quotations, maybe maybe good faith that hurt the the specific goals from. You know, more than two contractors, uh, so from there. We reached out to Pete, to give him some interest. They said if he interested, the us and quote for us. Here we are. Need another.
Were they above or below your estimate? Well above your estimate?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars, that's fifty seven thousand. Above, it's nice, it's a people. So. Um, if you want that breakdown, maybe actually send it, it's just some code, but. Right before meeting, uh, developed the United request to break down that's the restroom. Restroom in the amount of two hundred thousand available. So it's two stall restroom with the, you know, the store, you're back, see the new line, serene. Restroom. Pavilion, twenty four, it's originally twenty four, it's six.
We talked to him in the microphone, I don't think you, is that, I can't hardly hear you.
Hear me. So. The uh. Uh, again, restroom, custard, the piano storage, the millions, big door. Yeah, I said I spoke to Pete, uh, when we got the. We got the quote and. They said, no, yeah, the the one outlier that they were kind of surprised by. Oh, a service electric service over that restroom's eighteen thousand bucks. Been the one that's coming to the models, um. The uh, but everything else they say was competitive, um. Aren't it? Opened out of the ordinary, so. This, were your thoughts, what are you doing forward?
Do we know why, do we know why they all? Decided not to, you know what I mean, usually there's something, something they don't like, whether it's the completion date or, you know what I mean?
So.
We know what, what it was.
Yeah, I I reached out, yeah, they were, they were interested in general, whole thing. Yeah, I I reached out, yeah, they were, they were interested in general whole thing, but. We didn't call them. We had to do. If we have to do like. I care, it's above, but when the state code, you have to do the the bottom. So. There's no way around that. Um, the other one, Cleary Buildings was another one. Well, they're kind of better with. They were also interested in general whole thing. And it kind of fell through the last minute there, the mason that they were gonna use. Um, it was out of the Walt Cities backed out. And, you know, the other couple were. They were showing you trust and. So. Here we are, so.
Is there anything that can be? Trained or changed or adjusted to? Cause there's fifty thousand and twelve grand, fifty fours on.
Well, um, I haven't approached the first on this, I think. Creating. So sharing, um. You know. You know, even the fixtures restroom facility to. Per just install those on toilet sink. Uh, when spins. Seating grass, you know. Painting on the inside of the bathroom. You. Again, I don't know how much savings there is in that, uh, cause obviously there's a cost to these guys. Well, that's so. And I will win. Have the time, so.
Yeah, that would be the other thing is that it's not just the time of putting into. Doing the bathroom and doing the trim, doing the top zone, doing all of that, but how much further does it put them back? From the projects they already have on their books? That they're not gonna be able to do because they're involved with this, so. It's not just the cost of a a toilet. Or a cost of a pain, more to it for value.
You still have the material costs. The, um. I mean, the only other alternative is that even more should be competitive quote and sort of that threshold is still treat our public bidding thing. And basically send it out nationwide or platform. If several hits, but obviously.
So do we need this process?
Do we need the, so we have the toilets up there, what else in the other space? The storage?
Storage, yeah, I mean, just make out room of water here. Through the water service cylinder.
So, can we, like, if you would? Do we need all that space? Can we save money by making that substantially smaller? And we need to store things up here?
Actually, that space is substantially small now, the way that it's set in there. It's not just. A water heater that we need to put in there. We need to put in cleaning supplies. Uh, it needs to be a a janitor's closet, basically. Uh, the same thing that we have at Hawks Ridge, and I think it's about the same size that we have at Hawks Ridge. The Hawks Ridge is full. I mean, just like you put up a new garage. And hit your house, right? The new garage never is big enough, well, you need, y'all just need more growth. I don't believe cutting down on the size of that janitor's closet or that workspace. Is gonna save fifty thousand dollars.
Or tap the building.
But. I think, uh, with the amount that John told me, with this bid and what be left to spend. Was that three hundred and two? I should have brought that paper up. Um, so I think we were, um, like seventy five, maybe.
Seventy five.
Short of the current cash. So. You know, uh. The Parks Board has got previous fund money, and we've been paying for the engineering costs for this project, so. Right now, there's a hundred and seventy five thousand left of that. They have, I think, fifty five thousand in their safe account. Um, the bond that you just sold today has part purpose in it. Uh, it has six hundred thousand for the pickleball. There's thirty five hundred unassigned, uh, because they sell bonds at five thousand dollar increments, so there was thirty five hundred non-assigned. You heard that you got a premium, so that's another eleven thousand, so there's. Uh, thirty six thousand unassigned. No, I'm sorry, I did have that wrong, um, sixteen thousand unassigned. In the current bond. That you could, because there's part purpose in that bond, you could assign it to this project. Uh, don't you have a calculator? So the one seventy five and the fifty five and the sixteen. What's that equal to, somebody?
One forty six, two forty six, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so two forty six and then, uh, so. Then you're just really close to the fifty thousand. Uh, still short. Uh, Joan, I kind of talked about options, you know, if the pickleball. Project comes in under budget, you you might have funds there. If they make adjustments to the pickleball. Project to bring that cost down fifty thousand. You would have bond, available bond funds and still the the park designated, um, purpose. Any of the other projects in that current bond, if they come in under budget, can that money can be, even though we. Here Marcus or whatever, it can be used for any other bond purposes, so it may, you know. They haven't happened yet, so I can't tell whether we free up something or not. To me, that's the most likely place to to look for. Um. You know, the pavilion was already gonna be bigger, they made it smaller. The restroom, I, you know, and the discussions with the meetings, I think they took it down to the minimum acceptable side sides. If you want to make the improvements to that park. I think you're probably, you know, if you want to design and you want restaurants, you're probably looking at the the. Fair minimum now. Is that right?
The one other, one other option is, like I said, that's a C of U block, that's true, they're agreeing, I can work with P and C of it. Woke up a wood frame structure, um. You know, we we had talked about that, you know. I think, uh, as far as maintenance and. All the block structures, it's just. Well, that is an option.
And the, the pavilion going from twenty four by thirty six to twenty four by twenty four was not a cost savings. Um, it has everything to do with leaving green space and how close they were gonna be to. The, uh, the playground. At thirty six feet, so wasn't necessarily a a cost saving move, follow it. It is, but it's, there was a reason for it.
Counsel.
And I think. Honestly, I think Cynthia is on the track. Um, the right track on this, and that is to find the funds that we need to keep. The integrity of what that plan already is for that part of finance area. Um, if we just keep chopping that away until it gets down to where our budget is. I think we're gonna be. Less than satisfied in. Ten years of what we have there. I think we're better off to put the plan that we have in place. And. By the. By the month.
And you said sixteen thousand for electric, or you can't. Eighteen thousand. So, oh, there's a savings there as well. That's just a service, though, isn't it?
That's just service, so. That is a good idea, their electrical side, the triple malice rates.
Counsel. Box.
I think we could take two hundred thousand. What's that? So I think we take two hundred thousand, but not at bathrooms. But I mentioned green space, I do see trades playing. In that area from the basketball courts and playground. And the structure just pretty much takes that all away. So, just keep in mind, it's it's a community park. We chose to not have park parking spots. Which the the distance from the park probably is at most. Three and a half, four blocks. The trail, trail, seven blocks away, we aren't gonna factor them there.
That's as it stands today, as that build up was more nor, I don't know where. Are there, but.
There was another, a a bigger area initially in the preliminary plan discussion for a a larger. Park that would have, um, sport fields of some sort. It was kind of a strange outlaw shape that.
Neighborhood park that people would cross the street. Your house to let.
Well, the the park itself, we, with the, uh, Parks Beautification. Committee or brought this included all of those features, the pavilion and the bathroom. And it was the city council that decided to do it in two phases and not to do it all at once. So, the fact that the pavilion and the bathrooms are back on the the agenda right now. Isn't just a whim, it's because this is what the residents wanted originally. And they were told that they'd have to do it in two separate phases. So the pavilion, the bathrooms. Have already been spoken on by the the residents, and that's what they want.
Spoken out.
A year ago, when we brought the the, uh. Uh, the park itself, that was the plan of Parks of Beautification. Or brought to the city or brought to the city council. Based on information that they obtained from the residents at Hartland Heights.
Sorry. I don't know if they have documentation of the residents. But I'll throw, I mean, we we talked about fireworks a month ago. That which say three percent of the registered voters. We have. So far in this room, one. And we're gonna make a two hundred fifty thousand dollar decision on that.
Yeah, it's. Counsel.
I remember there was a focus group and everything for the residents that were in the area that were up with the parks committee, put together park plan. Right, right?
We just said it was too expensive to do all of it at once. This is how we came to do it this way.
And. Quite frankly, this was. Part of putting some of that stuff off is there's an increase. That will feed in the.
But what else do we have going on with parks this year? What other other things are we building on? We do.
In the new bond, there's, uh, six hundred thousand for pickleball. Courts, and that's what we discussed, that maybe that project. It, you know, uh, could be changed. To free up the money needed, cause the whole bond has park project purpose.
Yeah, I would ask, at this. I guess I'm not really biting the bullet on this one yet. I think we need to rethink or maybe look to see. What happens with the pickleball court and what we can do. It's I'd like to know they all kind of jump ship on it and.
Pickleball's plan for this fall.
Next year's construction.
Are you taking bids this year? Is that?
It's, yeah, the. So would be funded until next this period. So we on next month's agenda. Do the design.
So. I I can't hear you Shane, but I believe what Shane said was on the July agenda would be the engineer's estimate for the pickleball court. They agree, the agreement. Yeah. Well. So will that give us more information in July? That could help. The council.
I just know you can't screw around with it too much or they won't even wanna do it at all. Right, so that you have that issue. And you can't start piecemealing and taking a bunch of shit away from them, or they won't wanna do it either. So you're kind of.
When you're talking about that, you're talking about contractors.
Teams, yeah, yeah.
We just.
You know, you can't, you gotta be careful now because you can't really do much with it, cause you're. Everyone knows what the price. So like, you can free shop it. So what do I do? We've just spent. A pile of indecision tonight. Yes, we're.
Anyone like to make a a motion for anything? The agenda topic is resolution to approve. Peak quote.
I'd option to move forward for these reasons that. Eleven thousand savings from that bond that, um, there is an overage, we did wait. Um. In going forward with. What else is in that bond and look for savings. For that, so. I talked about this park pavilion. With the residents in that neighborhood for a while.
So as long as we can come up with the difference between those things out of the six hundred, which would be what another fifteen or sixteen? No.
Be out of that six hundred.
About fifty thousand is what we're still looking for, but then again, that's based on an estimate of what the rest of the cost would be, so.
So is your motion to approve the peak? Is there a second?
You know, just remind you have two hundred and forty six thousand on hand for for this project.
We have two hundred forty six thousand on hand and it's two hundred.
But you have engineering to. Yeah, real.
Waiting for a second. Going once. Going twice. Still need a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
So I wanna confirm that there will be no, um, addition to the Hartland Heights part this year. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not for two hundred fifty seven thousand, other three hundred and some thousand. I just think we need to. That just seems crazy.
Thank you for sending us some notes.
It's that, it's just, it doesn't seem reasonable to me, yes. I think we should be able to figure that out somehow.
All right, well, let's move on to item number sixteen, Hartland Heights Pond, we have three resolutions. Here to look at, the first one. Sixteen days to approve the stormwater detention and drainage facilities. He's like Shane, tell us about that.
Yes, this is the easement on the south side. And. Some villain poker of. That firefly basin extended. Issues in the original design, the the hurdle on the fog firefly basin of refuse, so. Need the. The easement. For seventy nine. However, the high threat. Stormwater area facilities.
Well, the volume have signed off on this prep, Shane. There's no monetary consideration, correct? So counsel just needs to. Vote to approve or not approve. So.
Say it.
Roll call please, Tom. Bye. Thank you. Next item. Be resolution to approve the city's reimbursement to Iowa Law Development for remaining items. On the Hartland Heights Pond Trail.
So this is the city's participation for the Hartland Heights Pond Trail, or the conditions of the plant. The city approved and paid the first portion, two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, give or take. Think back in March. Take it off, they're still there, but. So they uh. This spring, they finished off the trail, there's a ramp at the street. And then there's some curving dirt replacement, replacement there's uh. The primary cost for then for the second portion, and then that would be. The city's full participation on the trail. For this, for this uh portion of the trail, that's been waived.
You had earmarked for this to be paid with what, like, sales tax money, I believe the budget line is one twenty-five, that's a little bit higher, but there's. Available funds in loss for that. So. Roll call.
Hi, hi, hi.
Look at that trail out there, do you guys have a preference for signs, and I'm trying to get some signs out there quickly? Because we're having lots of motorbikes, motorbikes.
Oh, no motorized vehicle signs?
We have that, but do you wanna be specific? Electric bikes, scooters, cars. You have a preference?
So.
On the trail?
It's a trail?
The north end. They go down there, because I saw that sign instead, everybody. Yeah, either they ignore it or don't see it, are you sure you're supposed to sign up? Shane and I already got gates up there. Okay. And maybe we'll do that, we're gonna put a sign, no pond or trail access, enter on trail on South Parkland or something, we'll. Might help with the wording, but.
I can have the little motorized, one of the big ones, I figured I could put up there, but maybe we'll further that along.
Yeah, but if we have the gates there, and then. I guess if there's an emergency spanking.
Right, that way right now.
That's right, that's your two or that one, two that one. Yeah, and cut it, and we'll replace the chain or whatever, but yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was saying, no motorized vehicles.
No motorized vehicles.
Council, you haven't yet approved acceptance of this, so get a little head of cart before the horse team. But. Okay. I've never seen Shane put up that, so they can. And then.
And I think this is the one to accept the uh. Five, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pond and everything that goes with it.
Yep. So last month, I think maybe uh the the city approved parts away, class survey number twenty-eight point two. Basically establishes the the pond boundary. So this uh. Resolution is to accept that flat survey in the pond property. So then the city will not own that property, it will be responsible.
So.
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Hi, hi, hi.
Lynn and Joe, what would you like for signage?
Yeah, I don't know, just more input, do you, are you? You approved electric bikes, do you have approved electric scooters, do you?
I think electric bikes, you have to allow on the trails.
I think I'm true.
They they are. That's the thing now.
Majority of the.
So just no motorized vehicles and leave at that, see what happens.
I think so, like, that's what we have on the rest of them.
When we say electric bikes, you're talking like bicycles.
E-bikes, yeah.
Because there's a lot of those. You know, they may.
Let's, let's start with that and see if we have a problem, we can. I think that should go. Okay.
I have thirty seconds, I'm sorry, I'll be quick, I'd just like to thank the city of Fairbanks and the council. Mayor Shane Wicks, John and Hall and Hall. Um, for being patient throughout this project, I know it's taken a lot longer than we all expected, but. Kind of was based on sales also, and then federal containment, but. We really appreciate it and hope to grow it, and more. Controlled growth, obviously, so thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right, let's move on to item number seven, well, number four, we have a couple of resolutions here that Shane's gonna.
So before I get into them, I handed out a sheet to the council members. Just so under. What maybe I have to go with what the numbers are. This is the funding that happens. Earlier on the agenda was the uh. Resolution of the the bond. So the bottom weight, um. Item number seven, bottom right, the total, sorry, one month, the five point five, that was the agenda item. That was discussed earlier. So to come up with that number, we have a contingency on the construction. And a lot of times when we do a planning, we assume one or ten percent. Things come up during construction that you just can't perceive during the design and the planning process. Well, in this project, we can see under item number five, there we had a hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred thirty dollars in contingency. So that equals dollars that been set aside. Part of the plan to address things that come up during construction. So just wanna give you that as up, so on the bottom then, on that sheet, number five, contingency twenty percent. I've broken down all of the. Items that have either been approved or that are on the agenda here to discuss, so you can see if the council proves them. You know, what you would have left in that contingency amount. So just so you, I just wanna make sure you're aware of, you know, does the city have this budgeted or not? So. For that. You want me to take you from there, Joanne, or you wanna go one through? Item, drive them here?
Uh, yeah, keep going, please. Change order number one, or?
Yeah, change order number one is uh. For eighteen hundred and forty-six dollars. What that is, there's a. There's reinforced concrete over. Underneath the uh access drive to the observation well. Um. You know, during the design process, the city mentioned uh. That they have some twelve-inch concrete pipe running around, so you're hoping to use that. For this drive. Well, with the. The uh. American iron steel requirement. You have to provide certifications that reinforce it in that scenario. And so, I don't know, we can't do that, so. Contractor had to provide the concrete pipe, so that's what this change order is for, for them to actually purchase the. Reinforced kind of.
Same, um, so all these items that you're talking about here. Were not in the original budget, but except. Within the contingency of twenty percent, so.
That's right, they were not in the the uh. Project grant well, there were bids. So it's a change order.
So I need a motion to approve change order number one. For the contractor supply twelve-inch RCP. Hope. So we're. Go back to the money here, so where are we landing with all of this then?
You have forty-six thousand left in your contingency, if you approve everything on the agenda tonight.
Tick down. So numbers are item A. We originally figured into the budget, um, and we talked about the welding. That's under the engineering services agreement, the welding inspection. So all we we had a certain twenty thousand dollars, but when it came back, their quote was twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
So that item A is for that welding.
I see what you're doing, I just was like, following the.
Yeah. Yeah, under the bottom, the the number on the left is the cost for that specific one, and then the item on the right is how much is left.
Diminishing with churns. That's why I was like, what are those?
No, it's your question.
Like your bank balance.
So then, just under that sheet, Mary Ann, and that sheet, and what you were talking. Item, item B, pay order number one, oh, support.
B matches up with A. Okay, that makes sense now, I was just like, what is going on? I need a motion to approve. Change order number one for contractor supply twelve-inch RCP.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Mary Ann.
Hi, hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Thank you. Second one is to approve change order number two for stainless steel leasing pipe, Shane?
So, yes, item number two, the original uh, the plans that were for bids was a carbon. Steel casing pipe for twelve-inch diameter, well, number four, actually, well, number four. So. I'll let Brian talk about this some, but. They just turned the last month or so, got done. Uh, working on well three, and um significant issues with that casing pipe. So they came back, um, ISG recommended that, recommended that we look at considering doing stainless steel casing pipe. Which is. Gonna be a lot more durable, lasts a lot longer than carbon steel. But do I even wanna touch base on that a little bit, about some of the issues and?
Sure, um, so what? The. The carbon pipe out of well three, when we just had it uh rehab, it's, I don't know, but specifically about the casing itself, because I haven't seen the video. But the downpipe, which was still carbon steel, uh, there was. They were having us do, uh, let's see, back in seventeen, the pipe almost come apart from rotting in seven years. They did it in ninety-nine, two thousand seven. Or no, two thousand ten. Then in seventeen, they did it again, when in seventeen, the pipe almost come apart, so at that time, they switched to galvanized pipe. When we read it at this time, there's signs of it, but not as bad. From just the downpipe, I don't know what the casing is. And uh, so once we had. Talked about it with um. Uh, well, between uh.
I S.
ISG, thank you very much. Um, they, you know, they were concerned that if we were having problems every seven years with the pipe, what, you know, what should we do, is there a better way to go about it? And that's how it come up after the initial one. Uh, which was in the process of. This whole thing. And so I reached out to Tom from Northway and asked him what his opinion was, because that's what he deals with all the time. And he said, you know, carbon steel is gonna be okay, stainless steel is gonna be a hundred-year well, you won't have to worry about it for the, probably the life of the well. So I guess the question is whether we. Go ahead now, well, it's. It is what it is initially, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. Or take our chances down the line, now, we have experience with that, with well gone into that have been recased. And they've been recased to the point where you can't do anything more with it. Which also restricts what you can do with the well, as far as your production and whatnot, you know, because every time you case it down, you gotta downsize your pipe and downsize your pump, so. Then you're not gonna be getting much out of your well, so. My thought is if you go forward with this now, now, you something we shouldn't have to worry about as far as the casing part goes. And uh, we won't restrict ourselves going forward. With. Space issues.
Give a guess on. My insights twenty twenty, we would put this pipe in on well number three. Back or basically what you build, how much would it? And save as far as the issues of of fixing that pipe?
That pipe, nothing, because the downpipe is what the problem was, now, the casing, I don't know, because I haven't seen the video, nor have I got any information back from that, we're trying to get it from them, so we're still in that process, but. What the casing is, you know, the casing pipe itself is, I don't know, but the downpipe itself, going from carbon steel to at least galvanized, was an improvement. Perhaps the next time we go. I'm not sure, I'm thinking whether we go stainless, but the problem is, the pump was the problem. Every seven years, so when they pulled it out, I got a picture, that the screen around the pump was completely. Packed full of iron. So we were getting severely limited on what our volume was, at least a hundred gallons a minute. Was restricting it, and so every seven years, we gotta pull the pipe out, well, does it make sense to put stainless pipe in it or not? Maybe, because you can put it back in. Then it doesn't have a problem, and you just change the pump. That's something I gotta ask some questions and find out going forward, but. I use the pipe with a good sort of shape, well, back here, have replaced, so we've had it replaced, so it's easier, so it's bad shape. So that's kind of where I'm thinking, is maybe we consider stainless next time, and then we don't have to keep changing pipe every time, it's just the pump.
What's the linear feet?
It's two hundred linear feet.
And then what, your A, and what schedule, you know? Three or four, schedule ten, or what is it?
So this.
Standard that that's required for well cases that have.
Much curious.
That'd be more of a question, Brian, I should, I guess.
So council, I'm adding before you right now, it's change order number two, and the amount is seventy-two thousand eight hundred fifty-five seventy-two for stainless steel casing pipe.
Then who? Just, this change order from Trader?
Yes, yeah.
So they priced, obviously priced out stainless, whatever they're gonna use.
Yeah, so everything that's involved in this change order is the casing pipe, obviously, stainless steel is more expensive. Um, and then they had mobilization and freeze well drilling. Um, because it's, there's a. I think it's a sixty-eight week. Um, laying time in getting the stainless steel. To the site, so they're gonna have to be mobile. I'm sure there's a few other costs in there, but that's, you know, the stainless steel casing pipes from on forty-eight thousand five hundred. Mobilization seventeen thousand, and then they have a stocking piece of the. The carbon steel casing pipe, which. City hadn't approved yet, but they had to go ahead and order it to get the I certs, which are required as part of. So had searched. Submitted, approved, you're approved. So we did negotiate down that place, um, for the rest. Splitting that with Schreger. Yes, the total then comes up to the seventy-two thousand. Eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Then who's? Are you guys doing welding inspections on this?
No, they're third party.
Okay.
Yeah, they're coming in from. The outlets.
Is there some considerations with welding stainless too?
Well, that's just it, is, you know, some of that mobilization, obviously, the material for the well is gonna be different, the process may be different, so I'm sure there's additional costs to reduce with that. Um, you know, some mobilizations, there's, there's a lot of different things that's wrapped up into that number.
That seemed some pretty, pretty stainless, and it's all impregnated with other foreign material, it's all rusted, you know, rusting, contaminated.
Yes, it's, I mean, and it's not. You know, this is just something because of what was observed in well number three, it's not a requirement, you know, for a project to move forward.
Sure.
It's a significant gain cost. You know. Chances are, is it gonna pay for itself in the long, or the S, but, you know, it's gonna be a while, it's gonna. Right here, it's a complete event, it's gonna be down the road. But obviously, you know, the city's putting it in for long term, so, you know, if you can get a hundred years out there versus forty or fifty years, you're less maintenance on the way, it's. It's gonna pay for itself, like I said, it's. So. It's really. Is worth seventy-two thousand dollars at this time or not?
That's, yeah. Wow, roughly forty-five percent, sixty-five, fifty-five percent more, somewhere in there, a little over double. So this. This project, done what, August? The observation, everything will be done in August?
Well. Yeah, the original dates, I think it's in that change order, milestone date was. The end of August, and that was for the the site work and finish grading. And uh, completion day was October thirty-first, but if you look on the second page, then. The change order would revise the milestone date October seventeenth, with the completion date November twenty-fifth. Because they can't do that, also, they had to do the finish grading and see it until that's done, so.
The reason I ask is okay, for a short period of time. Less change orders, I mean, how, we're already, we're still under our. Contingency of twenty percent, but. We're stuck a hole yet?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, how much farther do we have? We do have sixty-eight weeks for that pipe to get here, but how many other change orders? Under this scenario, we still have. Including the other three, the other. The three change orders, so forty-six thousand. Left.
Yeah, and I mean, the timing really didn't have anything to do with it, it's just really a long project that's left. They. Some of you may have seen their paper. They, some of you may have seen their paper, they're on the site, they start, there's three or. Straighter head, but, you know, we haven't given them the notice to proceed yet on either the observation well or well or four. Um obviously, until they get all their smelt in and approved, and they can't do that until they know. And they can, they go stainless steel, only carbon steel. So, yeah, there's, there's a significant proportion of project. Yours can still come off, there's, you know, but then again, there may not be any, you know, that big, big done project.
So what, did I miss that? What was the difference between um the carbon and this?
So there's an email at the backside of that change order back end, so I had asked questions, ISG.
So it was twenty-eight versus seventy-seven?
Are you on the difference in cost?
Yeah.
But then you have mobilization and restarting the thing.
Yeah, so the difference in cost was, yeah, the original bid was uh, it's two hundred and five feet and a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Only a foot for twenty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the original casing pipe. Then the new casing pipe is two hundred and five feet at three hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. So that's seventy-six thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. So that difference is that forty-eight thousand, so. Then you got the uh mobilization and the restocking fee, and then you got the, the general contractor's mark up. And typically, they have ten percent for first fifty, but they refuse that because of these stuff.
And what's the difference in longevity between the two?
So in that email, they say that you may get forty years, is what they're seeing now, and some of the carbon steel, I don't know if it's been manufactured bigger than it was thirty years ago, forty years ago. The deal is, but that's what they're seeing is maybe forty years out of them. They, the stainless steel, they said if they can, you're up there close to a hundred years. Somebody's gonna be wrong with here, I'll verify that, but.
So if we, so if we decide to just stay with the carbon steel, all those other costs go away? Or do they still apply all the mobilization and everything?
No, no, nothing would change that, that change order go away, they perceive it carbon steel, we're gonna be mobilization.
And to do that for forty years?
Now and then, forty years or maybe, because what, well, number three is twenty-six years old. You're seeing, you know, probably some maintenance costs that you wouldn't see if you pull a stainless steel. I mean, stainless steel is still gonna corrode some, but. There's gonna be something, it's not like it's just, you're gonna see all the costs in forty years. Where all the costs, you're gonna see the maintenance cost on way, maybe you may see ten thousand dollars in seven years, or forty years, you may see fifty thousand, then. Forty years, you may say, well, we gotta recase it, that's gonna be a couple hundred thousand, where you may not have to stainless steel. Again, we don't know the numbers, but, but yeah, either way, it to recook that seventy-some dollar value plus interest, it'd be a long time.
Already. Your, your comment is maybe stick with the same pipe because. Save seventy-two plus.
If it lasts forty years, I'm just saying, like, we'll probably end up spending money on the well. Just it'll be for different things, you know, eventually, but then that gives us more wiggle room.
But your, your, your point is, down pipe, you're never replacing, you're sleeving it for new site, right?
Well, right now, if we use the carbon steel or galvanized, we are replacing it, because it's still give. It's just still carbon steel with the galvanized.
Keep the whole casing out, but new casing in?
No, it's not the casing, it's just the down, so the casing is on the outside of the.
That's what I'm getting at, if that went, took a crap, you'd have to re-sleeve it with.
So what they do is they put in a smaller one inside.
That's what I'm saying.
The shrinks up the side of your well, which, you know, maybe we're digging enough that we can get by for, you know, who knows, we can be honored twenty years or. Times and we're still okay, but.
So I'm saying, if you recase it, you gotta narrow the diameter of the, the well.
You know, it just restricts what you can do for piping from the pump up then.
Yeah, so right now, I think well three is an eight inch casing, right?
Yeah, it's five inch pipe.
Yeah.
And it restricts us to the point where we can't put any uh well monitoring equipment in there, it has to be an airline, because. We only have that much room to put something in it or monitor our depth for pump reports, so.
So I think well four, hold it in inner diameter, so the twelve inch casing we're talking about is the inner pipe, so it's twelve inches inside diameter. So it's significantly larger than well three. So I mean, it does give room to forty, fifteen years down the road, to reline it maybe with an eight inch. You're gonna reduce productivity at that time. But it would still be similar to what well three is now.
Great. Any other questions, counsel? If not. Consider a resolution to approve this change order. Thoughts? Seconds, thank you, this has been a tough one.
I like what you say, Mary, I'll, I'll be the first one to say something that saving seventy-two over a long. A long period of time, but then we have an eight inch pipe. Or twelve inch pipe, and maybe down the road, you could refit it with an eighty inch pipe down the road, I mean, you're talking forty years. That coupled with, if we approve change order number three, why aren't we down to forty-six thousand?
Well, so here's the other thing, as we're talking about well number three, they're already talking and trying to push us into getting. The next well, and this well isn't even done yet, as far as new wells.
Number five?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't hear that.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
Not.
So, I, I, I guess I would be inclined just to, to, to just keep with the carbon.
That makes sense to me, too, I mean.
So I'll still call for. A motion to approve the resolution for the change order. Not hearing one. So guys, for lack of emotion.
Okay.
Now move on to the next one.
So. Change order number three, and then the next item, the agenda, the engineering services amendment. Um really are one and the same item for discussion. So we'll kind of go both of them together, and then you can decide how you want to proceed for both of them. So this is the uh well monitoring of the existing well. You talked about before. So change order number three is basically Northway, Northways. To be, so freeze well drilling is drilling well, and Northways doing all the other stuff with the well. Uh as subs to Schrader. So they uh. Um change order number three basically be utilizing Northway. To monitor the existing wells, the existing private wells, of the three of them. And then installing the monitoring equipment, and then when the monitoring is done, they would reboot the monitoring equipment. So you have to be a certified well driller to access the knowledge of the industry. Not anybody can just go up and access them, so that's why Northway would be involved with this. Since they're working as a sub underneath Schrader, the city utilized them. That's what's driving change order number three. So then the amendment, so then item D, I think it is on the agenda, the amendment to services. And it's. The bulk of that is LRE's time, there are some, they decided that. Again, but that amendment, I can't explain what they would be doing. So that includes their time plus their monitoring equipment, a little bit of time on that one too, system and that. And that amendments, so the change order number three. Was kind of arranged, because obviously Northway's not sure, is it, you know, one well, is it three wells, you know? So there's actually four wells, one of the wells needed well number four that were drilling the observation. And then up to three existing private wells. So Northway kind of gave a price range of uh. I think it was eight hundred dollars per well, up to thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars per well, depending on how much time and effort they got at twelve. So that range totals with prime contractors markup, thirty-five hundred dollars to fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty. Change order number three, so the change order would put the highest number, obviously, come in under that, but. And then the amendment then would be nineteen thousand on top of that, so when you combine the two. You would have uh. Fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars for change order number three, and nineteen thousand dollars for the uh. And amended engineering services.
Can you remind us on the purpose of the private well observations?
So they, if you recall, they had um. One of the property owners out to the west of the site that had fired when this was due to the. The public notice. And to say fire on that would impact their well, their, their well's pretty shallow, they already had issue with it. So, what the hope with this is, is if the city monitors. Obviously, you can't monitor every well, but if you monitor strategically up to three wells, you kind of have an idea, because when you drill a well. You did a pump testing, you could see the impact on those wells if you monitor. If there's not significant impact, then there's nothing to do. Obviously, if there's a significant impact on them, then, you know, we have some time to address that, that issue. It's just getting there, going to the pump, if there's room to do that, you can do that. Then we have to, they have to get a new well, um. Install, you know, are they close enough to the city extended water range to them, and they've got city water? Or do they already have city water in part, and got to see water? In, by doing that now, you know, gives city, you know, kind of a heads up, hey, this could be an issue. And obviously, we're just through the, the. Well testing, you know, pump testing, and then it's gonna sit for two or three years until we get the treatment in. So we have time to figure out, okay, we gotta address, you know, this well, or maybe he's got a was, we have to do something. Um if we don't do anything, monitor it, we don't know for sure, obviously, we don't have the information. Then when everything comes online, when we get treatment in and we actually start using it full time, and somebody complains they got issues. Well, we've got it up and running, can't shut it down, so I guess you could, but. Deal with that, so it just gives the city some information, so the city's got an opportunity to prepare, and maybe we find out there's no significant impacts. Right now, the property questioning, that questioned it, they're kind of out, they're kind of on the edge of the. The zone that's impacted, you know, based on. Information provided in that technical memorandum. So I think one of the wells they suggested, since they fired, probably a couple other wells. Again, this is kind of like. Change order number two, you know, something that may be beneficial to the city, maybe beneficial to residents, you know, city. But it's not necessarily a project, so. Change order, not really necessary to get a project, the other two, or just.
So if there is a, if there is a severe impact to one of those wells, set a period cost of the city to correct it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think it all depends on, you know, what the situation is. You know, it depends on the age of the well, the condition of the well, that's something I think if they're. If they find out, you know, this well's impacted, or. Based on the study, based on pump down tests, this well was impacted, it's definitely something needs to be done. Then I think, you know, you need to take into consideration, I think the well that, that first inquiry, they already said they have issues with the well. You know, without anything allowed there, so it's city's responsibility to completely drill them to do well. When they may have to look at group one in the near future, whether or not the city was for this project, and those are things that have to exist. They, you know, so it's hard to sit here and say, yeah, the city's responsible for everything. What have what, don't, don't know what the situation is with each individual well, we don't know what resolution would be, and you know.
Do those private wells, if they give us permission to get monitoring equipment in there?
Yeah, we have to give.
Are they all receptive, or you have to go on that part yet?
No, we're not, I mean, it's also supposed to be on the board with the first one, basically, to figure out, so the first part of LRE's. What their scope would be was then figure out in which wells would make sense to monitor. Then from that. Then the city would reach out, you know. Then the city would reach out to both property owners, you know, and say, okay, what type of wall do you have, maybe that wall's not even in a good position to monitor. Obviously, if property owners are on to monitor it, then get that, right, so. So yeah, it's, it's really kind of identifying probably, I. Move forward if they can find more out, but there may be to identify five or six wells, you know, priority, this is one, this is three, this is four. Each other, probably for the one, you know, if we're interested in the city or do this. They say, yeah, okay, let's collect some information on the well, does it make sense? And does the, something like that. Now, I guess I perceive that, and the city must be going.
How many wells could this project from that? Self view?
Well, I don't, I mean, it's hard to say how many wells it could potentially impact, I don't know how many wells there are in the state, I mean. We, the, this goal B would be a monitor of the three cities that you have, you have your own. Obviously, we want to monitor ones that are more highly, more likely to be impacted than one that's less likely. But I mean, there's, there's wells that are found in the city, right in the city area, that have water, but they don't want to be right on. I mean, I think like East South Road, you know, a few years ago, we extended water, or. They may be impacted.
What is the one in the middle of our park complex?
Well map is not very accurate, so don't, don't dwell on.
Well, I'm looking at it as like right in the middle of the field that we're farming, so it's like, what is that?
Don't, don't dwell on that.
Okay, because it's east, it's east of your tank, of the tank.
Also be monitoring our own, also their downtown, so we build, train that. That's just a little bit farther away, that they can cross anything, so.
Would it, that day, like north of the creek? That it's possible.
So if you. That way. Can you go to that?
That's.
That back in, I don't know.
On change order three?
Yes. Scroll down. Like all the way to the end, there's like three exhibits on. Yeah, the LRE technical one, right? Right there is the first one, it kind of shows the well, but then they're not fully accurate. Go down to the second page, so that's kind of, I think that exhibit is. And they would be pumping well four, then well one and two, that's kind of the drawdown range. If you look at the legend, I think the dark purple on the outer edges is like zero to ten foot of additional drawdown of the wells. And then right up, you know, at, at well number four, it's ninety to a hundred feet, obviously, that will.
So what's, what's the private well of interest, what does that, what does that mean? Those are the blue and white ones on, on the other map.
Oh, right there.
Yeah, the blue and white ones are just, they say private wells of interest.
Oh, two on the south view, the one on uh St. Patrick's Road.
Cause there is one on the north side of the creek.
I don't know. As what wells, I think McNamara between west side. I'm pretty sure they don't have any service, they probably have a well, they may be impacted. I see, I heard it just sell, or. So much as well. You know, I, I assume that's, you know, everything east of the creek, there may be some wells, but there's water main right there. So, again, we have to figure out what, what wells would like to be impacted, if they are at all. Well, the first solution is to just go ahead and drop it, false. You, you don't, you don't do well, maybe you connect water, it's right out front. That's, again, you know, if that is a problem, whether or not we monitor now or not. Don't monitor it now, we drill the well, we. Find out after things are running, treat facilities in place. The city starts taking calls if they're. All's run dry, then the city's gonna have to address it at that time. Yeah, we can't monitor every well, so not to say that, so it can happen, there there goes online in the future. But I think we have a better idea of what. You know, probability that we.
Give us a baseline.
Yeah, it's collecting data, and go along with information for user. And that's right, my recommendation is you pick the closer ones to our site. Because the as he draws, there's a corner depression, so closer it is, the site will draw. Um, I'm suggesting that we pick the wells that are closer to the site, because the corner of depression for pumping. Uh, the closer it is to the well, the more the down, uh, drawdown's gonna be, so further away, it'll be less and less. Uh, that's how, that's just how it works at an aquifer. And so that's why we take three, because there's three managers generally in the area, and that should be enough to go on with some information.
So how long do we monitor these then? If, because potentially we're not gonna be really doing stuff until farther out.
So when they put. It's kind of why everybody the observation, we'll talk about the Bellham property, you know, well field. So. Doing well for, you know, right behind the uh Michael's Ice Cream. Doing the uh observation while the southwest corner of the site, so wells drilled. A pump in, we'll give them a pump, a pump in, one down, and we'll see what is the impact. On the observation, that'll give us a good idea, okay, because if we get one or two or three more wells that. Well, that's about it, it's two wells. Obviously, wells one and two are gonna go away sometime, that looks at the near future. You know, so what is the long term, you know, the observation wall helps us figure out what's the long term prospect, right? One, two, three additional wells. So when we're doing that, that drawdown, and have monitoring devices, and use some other three wells that. Check, yes, we've drawn it, drawn out testing, see how those will affect.
So technically, this will only take like a, that process would be six months, a year?
It's only like a month.
A month, okay.
And the actual pumping may only get.
That's why I was like, how long we pay this, and then.
Yeah, I think on the, on the, on the L R E. Or they need to try to treat it from this for one month.
Okay.
Yeah, we're hoping to get it so we can put the stuff in there, get the baseline, what it is before we even do anything. And then it's either gonna be a twenty-four hour or a three day pump cycle, where they're gonna let it run for that long. And then that's when we get the data of whether it's gonna interfere or not, once that's done, and they collect the data, that's it. Yeah, realistically, it should all happen.
Will, will the homeowners be on a bike when we do this?
They have to.
We have to have permission. Yeah, I mean, when, when you're starting to activate your pump. Or should I call the health department, have them come out and check our stuff before you guys do anything, or? Does it, on this, on your map, it doesn't even show that we have a well.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I've already seen a little bit of a loss in our water pressure, I mean, they have a, it's a brand new pressure tank, or you're, you're old, so I think we'll see. What's happening there, so.
Yeah, I mean, the city definitely, obviously, you know, we want to send out a notice to your, your.
Our system.
Yeah, your system, that the city's never. Also, some tests, you know, before air, if it would occur to go and find those things. Oh, but yeah, the ones that are being tested now, obviously, before they did that. But to you, Brian's point, we want to actually monitor wells, how they're operated before the city does anything. How we know what their, you know, their baseline is, for the same neck after the ski on. Where it's being drawn down.
Well, council, the question on item number C, and D related to it, is do you want to monitor?
Private wells.
The private wells, so.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Hi. Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you, and then item number D is the amendment to the engineering service agreement related to what you just approved. So.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi, thank you. Okay. Item number eighteen, resolution for purchase agreement in Diego's. South of Perez, as you recall, at our last meeting. Uh, we had a series of purchase agreements with tenants located along West Cemetery Row, but we were missing one. This is the remaining tenant, that's, we need to approve their grant, please. So.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, hi, bye.
Bye. Thank you. Number nineteen, resolution of twenty eighty with Kirkwood. Um, this partnership with Kirkwood, Chris came up with this idea many months ago, and has been working on this. With Kirkwood and came up with this twenty eighty, and I'll let Chris describe what's happening here, because he's brought it to fruition here with your approval.
So as part of the Bellham. That donation agreement, we had come up with a, whether there's a fifty-five acre. Native Prairie planning required by the city once we own the property. And within that agreement, it calls out for a third party to monitor the Prairie once in. Um, I live in Lynn County, observation first, they want to know what it's gonna do with it, with the Heritage Foundation, also for El Foundation. Which will do these native prairie uh. Sites, both of them wanted to deed the property before they.
Okay.
Agreement. Uh, yes, then I came up with Kirkwood, Kirkwood's willing to do it, Kirkwood needs funding to their scholarship program for this program, the native. Uh, Prairie thing, it's also part of their parks program, uh, so as the. Agreement says, we would be in for a thousand dollar day annually to their scholarship program. Till the time when they exit to the plant, and then up to five thousand a year. Uh, this will need to be moved to the Parks Department budget at some point, and. Agreement ended up in my budget of, for some reason, uh, under building, but down the road, we will be. Parts. You know, that question.
They do the planning, they're.
Things, they actually have the drills, and we put the, the planning and stuff like that, you'll see with the agreement, we will be buying the seed. Uh, so through them, and it has got a price, but um.
This doesn't go in effect for conservation, it's made this spell.
Well, when the conservation easement is established, is when our price goes to five thousand dollars acre. Kirkwood is asking them to build a thousand dollar day to be from here forward.
But I guess my, I'm certain, the, the well number four site, the observation well site. Great investments.
So. This is for the data plan. Conservation is next session. I don't know, maybe you guys are aware, but Kirkwood handles several of these sites in the area. They're very well designated. Very, the Birmingham, they handle things that it takes to keep them established.
And then this just goes forward in perpetuity?
Yeah, until either us or Kirkwood want to. Or we start building them on. Well, as soon as the city holds it, or required by the agreement, to put in the fifty-five acre native property.
Will never build them.
That. That's what it is, higher observation east, it can never be built though.
So we have. We gotta prep the soil and melt planet?
It depends on what chemicals they're using prior to, I talked to them about, to the Kirkwood guys about that, uh, they would have. If we know in two years it's going to native prairie, they have some. Uh, herbicides, pesticides, they recommend not to use, but until we know when something's gonna happen, there's no reason to. Change the farming practices at this time. Yeah, I discussed a lot of those issues with them. Uh, they may, depending on what the soil looks like at the time, they may want the city to pay to commit to keep village. I guess spells that out in there, but till we're, we're at that time, we don't know what we're gonna need. Do the prep the site.
So council, approving this agreement. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, one thousand dollars to their scholarship fund immediately.
Annual.
Annually, but immediately starts the clock, and then it will increase to five thousand annually. Uh. Says retaining ownership of the site, well, once it's planted.
Once it's planted, the year that they're planning, they want that, well, five thousand dollars.
Are they interested in maintaining native pond plants?
You know, we did actually talk about that a little bit, and they are interested, we'd have to look at a different agreement for that site.
Yeah.
Um, so if you wanted me to start working on that, I certainly could. This is specific to.
Sure.
Yeah. Third time, no.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Uh, the resolutions, so I need a roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi.
I guess one quick council, or question to council, that is, which one we to talk to about?
With her information, I guess.
Because they are interested.
We spent some money up there.
Well, I won't be able to talk to them till you get back into the fall session, but they're on the right now, but yeah, I can start working on that, so. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, you put a lot of work into this, it was a great idea, so partnerships are good. Okay, let's move on to item number twenty, resolution. Um, non-fire department employee conversation, or what we got going on here, so we got a couple more.
Three parks, yeah, three park employees.
Three parks employees added. So.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you, item number twenty-one, resolution for fiscal year and transfer, Cynthia.
Put on the right thing, um, so I've done a review, usually we do a transfer from the general fund to the garbage fund. I should, I shouldn't say that a lot, I don't think we're gonna need that, I'm not recommending that at the end of this year, I hope we'll be okay, it'll be close, so I think we'll be all right. Um, but the auditors like to see on June thirtieth. Enough to pay a twelfth of the fiscal twenty-six water debt service fee payment, okay? Which is about nineteen five. Uh. You adjusted the water debt service fee this spring, but it hasn't been in place a year, so, uh. The five thousand that I'm recommending that we transfer is lower than what we used to have to do before we adjusted the water debt fee, much lower. Um, but I think it's needed to get to the nineteen five, and if your water. Death fee catches up, you may be able to transfer it back to the regular water. At the end of twenty-six, fiscal twenty-six. And if you don't do it, and we're not at the nineteen five, you'll get written up in the audit.
Or. That sounds right. Roll call, please, Mary.
Hi. Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. Okay. Item number twenty-two, you've got some information on, um, city administrator position ads. Et cetera, so our final mission here is a hiring committee. And I have a, a couple of options here for the council to consider. One is basically for us to do it exactly the same way that we did it last time, which is. Um, assuming we're gonna get lots of applications, narrowing it down, conducting with full council. And city clerk, short virtual interviews to begin with, and then narrow it down to three in person. Again, with full council, that's one option, basically saying what we did last time. Another option for your consideration, oh, and the mayor's on that also, excuse me, another option would be. For mayor, only two council members and three department heads review. The applications and narrow it down to five, and do short virtual interviews with that group. Narrow it down to three, with all council members then doing the second interview. And. In both cases, all council members would be involved, at the very least with second. I feel very strongly that that needs to happen. But the second option would involve department heads in the first interview. Especially three departments, I should say. So. Lots.
So option one.
Just like, just like we did last time.
But just be. Just say this is crazy, there's thirty applications. What happens? Who narrows that thirty down to? Five.
Full council, that's what we did last time.
That's what we did last time, right? I can't remember how many we had.
I thought, I thought the group, because there was only a certain number that were brought to us.
Oh, the, our head headers.
They were all brought to the full council, we didn't have that many.
It went through a couple that they said they recommended to not.
It always, it always, remember, they have different colors. Oh, they recommend, and so, and then no down at the bottom, I think.
That was from the hiring search uh company, we're not.
Right, the recruiter.
Search company.
That's what I'm saying, like, he's, he's doing that. This time.
I think we're suggesting if you go with option one, the council.
Cynthia, how many, we've received a few applications.
Four.
Four.
One with city experience.
Only one with. That needs our, for requirements.
This, this time, your time.
Yes, yes, this time, so far, they have to have been out there about less than a week, right? Or about a week?
About a week.
About a week. And the posting goes to.
The seventh of July.
Seventh of July, so we've got. Three weeks yet.
And it's posted on. Where.
Lots, Corridor Careers, uh, the grapevine for the Iowa, um, city managers of. Uh, clerk net, uh, the Iowa League site, uh, zip recruiter. We didn't put it in the Gazette, so it's fourteen hundred dollars.
Oh, geez.
That's crazy, no wonder no one reads that paper. Did you, M D's, I didn't hear you say M D's.
No, we did zip, because it was higher ranked in the, uh, reviews of, um, and then zip sends it out to about. Let me see. A lot of, uh, associated sites that are the same, uh, qualification driven.
What is it, what is it costing, but I don't think LinkedIn or Glassdoor?
Oh, you did put it on LinkedIn, right? You told me you didn't.
Well, I said we, we looked at it, but I didn't, I didn't, I don't think we did. Because you have to have an account, you said you had an account, but it wasn't active, I don't have an account. We looked into that, but I don't think it fits on, and I didn't price every option. It was two hundred and fifty-five, I think, to put it on zip recruiter, two hundred and forty-five, maybe, but on Corridor Careers. Free for the league, of course, free for the email streams. Free to post it around, uh, uh, the city manager association, uh, yeah, that's, that was free too.
Yeah, with, uh, Mickey Shields, that, for.
Oh, that's right, Mickey Shields with the league did it on our behalf, for Patnall Cross, yeah.
And so, so that's where we stand now. Which of these two options? Are you referring? Does the, does the staff have been in twinton participating since that was kind of an issue the last? There are several of them here, almost all of them.
Yeah.
Asking for a friend.
Since you all kind of that issues last time.
Maybe, I, I, do we need all of them, or just part of them, right, because they have to work with the person and. Well, if we, depends on how many total people you want, we had about seven total people. The first four around, five council members, myself, and Cynthia. Um, if we go to the second option.
Well, they had Marquita.
Oh, and Marquita, right, um, so eight, so it depends on, if you go option number two. And involve department heads, potentially, you could just say two council members and avoid having an actual meeting, council meeting.
That would be okay, but.
For the initial, but I, I feel really strongly that. For the initial, but I, I feel really strongly that the whole council has to be on that.
I would, I would do that.
So it's a matter of which route you want to go, uh, number two would be my. How many people told you want on the? Committee, do you want to?
I don't know, for. By breaker.
No, you need it.
Twice.
Um.
Five or seven.
The way. Mayor, two council members, three department heads, so that's six.
Six or seven, yeah.
Well, then we, to go to odd numbers, you would have to either go with fewer department heads or more. One way or the other.
Well, they're not making a decision, they're just passing it on, so they're not requiring, we got five, we got seven.
Well, I'm sure they'd make a recommendation, but, yeah, and narrowing it down, definitely, yeah, so the final, that's the recommendation, it's to narrow it down, the final.
Four department heads, two council mayor, so it's odd number.
So you have, you have five, did you say boil it down to five, or is that just a number that you're caught up with, or what's the reason for, for five?
That's what we did last time, is we narrowed it down to five for the virtual interviews, and then we narrowed it down, after that, we narrowed it down to three for the in-person interviews.
It may be hard to determine that number at this point.
Right, we don't have no one, apple rates we have, yeah, yeah. But I guess the basic question is, do you want to involve department heads in that preliminary interview or not? I would, I would say yes.
Do, do, there, not to have. A hundred people in the room.
Right, yeah, we don't want too many, but.
So you just want two department heads?
Two councils, two department heads.
And the mayor and clerk. Do we have?
I am a department head, she is a department.
So that would be only one other department head.
That was the one in there.
Then they've got an even number, yeah.
But really, you're going to go on a rank system anyway, right, each one?
Doesn't even number really matter, though.
No, I don't think so. I'm sure.
Not on the preliminary.
You get a sort of metric sheet where you can.
Right, this is just the preliminary, okay. All right, not Parkinson's, anyway, just wanting preference as to how. To involve any department heads in that first interview, and then we'll see how many applications we get, and if we, you know, maybe we only get three. That might change it, so.
Okay, so who are those people?
May I throw my hat in the ring?
And Tom already volunteered that he wants.
Throw my hat in.
Well, you're all going to be involved in the final interview, so that's fine.
The initial.
The initial, you two, mine, okay. You partner.
I don't know, I mean, you guys have been here, so it's like.
You guys want to volunteer, we're. Whoever, I don't mind that at all.
Department heads then?
You're bound to shine.
I think the clerk should be involved.
I would say that the clerk needs to be one of the department heads, that's.
And two others.
That's fine, I would be okay with that, the clerk and two others. Well, you'll have your arm wrestled.
You want to.
We need a.
You want, that's who it is.
I guess, not the department heads, I was put it out that way, right, yeah.
If you get a, a crazy response, you can just throw all the names in a hat.
Yeah.
Be fairly really scientific about it, I don't care.
They're not stumbling over there.
I know.
Volunteer to be on this.
Yeah.
I don't care to, I'm thinking that whoever's most involved with that person.
If you want a secret ballot, you can let us know after the meeting.
I already figured out this, you guys can figure it out, figure it out.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want to make a motion of the makeup of the mayor to improve or no?
Sure. That way we have record, let's do that, that's what we did, I'm, I'm making that motion, so I can, that way it's on record what we.
Off there.
All right, all right, bye.
Thank you.
So we can't remember what we did.
Well, move on to, I'm sorry, Barbara, did you wish to come in on anything?
The only thing I would say was, um, the Gazette online is way, way, way cheap to advertise, so.
It's already on the corridor careers, I mentioned that, yeah.
The Gazette online, okay.
Or if you're doing it just online and not in paper form, is that what you're saying?
Correct. It's way cheap. And then, of course, the thingsaver, and of course, tariff service, and whether it's calling the job.
Yes.
And then, of course, I'm willing to share, and I would encourage everybody to share it everywhere.
There you go. Thank you.
Let me put it on LinkedIn, if we don't get any applications, I'm going to bring it up over here.
Are you going to put it on your account? Because I don't, city doesn't have one, I don't have one.
I guess. I'll make a city, no.
They are, so you should have one.
They charge us for it?
I have no, I don't know what they charge for post.
I have one, but I've never, and I have one, but I've never been built for one, but I, I'm not a city either, so.
Right, I have an account, but I'm not a city either, so I just have a personal account.
You are looking at that, Dan.
LinkedIn, I didn't know it was business.
Pardon me?
Businesses have LinkedIn.
It's a huge job search tool for people.
I'm a manager of my company, so LinkedIn, I just don't know what it costs to.
Do you want to look into it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for volunteering.
That is a good tool.
Okay, I get notices all the time.
That heads us. Down to number twenty-three claims. Are there any questions on the claims list?
What's? L Miller landscaping.
The Miller landscaper?
Yeah, I changed my surname.
No.
It's a Lu- Lucas Miller, I don't see, he's a man.
We've used it before.
No, no. Wow, what are the odds? But I did take a shirt from him many, many years ago, I bought a shirt from him, talking about showing my old boss that it's always start my own business as well. A personalized jersey.
Well, that was before you were here.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's a man of fire. Works through those uh tree removals, landscaping outside, but we've used him several times for different trees here and there that we tried to take out. He's been pretty reasonable, when we did the uh, the large ash tree removals. Um, I think, what is it, about a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks difference from the other folk, so he almost got that one too. So yeah, he's been a. Pretty helpful.
Any other questions on the claims? If not, need a motion to approve them, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, item number twenty-four. Anything left for citizens left, not on the agenda. Couple of citizens left? Okay. And we have a special meeting in two weeks, it's um. Yes, Cynthia, remind us of a couple of things we might get there, mayors, um. Comment, I think I sent an email on this, but um, just to formalize this, Cedar Rapids did approve. Our twenty-eight E annexation agreement um, last week, and. Uh, just put a lot of time and effort into that agreement, and thanked to him for getting that across the, the finish line.
There's five agents.
That's due to us.
Due to us, right, yeah, no guarantees on that. It's all well and good until they want something we have, but hopefully. Thanks behind us.
Okay, uh, that's all I had, Cynthia.
Um, reminded, the Iowa League conference is in September, the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, it's in Des Moines. Um, the registration is open now, the housing opened up um, Monday, if you're interested in attending, of course, the city pays all the costs. It is a great, uh, lots of council people and mayors, also staff, but this is the one that a lot of elected officials go to, uh, Joanne and I have gone to it a lot, I've gone to it ever since I've been a clerk. Um, Joanne is registered, I did register just because I wanted to be sure that we got a spot at the host hotel, but if we have a city administrator in place, I won't go, they'll, they'll use my reservation.
So we've got a spot designated for a person.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, special council meeting uh, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth for the bond and for the Williams Boulevard sanitary sewer discussion again also. And then citywide cleanup is June twenty-first, here it's, uh, parking lot here from seven to ten A M.
I will not be here on the twenty-fourth, but if you need me, I can call in.
I think that would be good, because one of the reasons to reconsider is at full council. Uh, I guess Tina's gone the next two weeks, she'll, I think be off Friday, and then she'll be gone for two weeks. I'm gone Thursday, I teach budget inmates.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn, please. So. So there's a first and a second, there's some here, all nighs, thank you, council.
Okay.
So you're.
No, for the uh Iowa Municipal Institute, uh, hang on, let me hit.